Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 6th School Committee Meeting. On, I did say that, February 6th. The meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. First on the agenda is open public comment. There was no one signed up for open public comment, so we don't have that tonight. Next is approval of minutes. Would you like to take the first one? I think it's from the 9th. Is that correct?
Yes.
January 9th minutes?
I would like to make a motion to approve the January 9th School Committee Minute Meetings as written.
Thank you. Seconded.
Seconded by Sarah.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Sarah. Any further discussion on the January 9th minutes? All in favor? There's only four members here tonight. Brent's not here yet. All in favor? Four zero vote. Thank you very much. Next is the February 23rd minutes.
January 23rd.
January 23rd.
January 23rd.
It's okay.
What happened? I just got myself a month ahead. The January 23rd minutes. I do have two corrections to the minutes if I could add. First of all is the role, the first vote on the budget was motioned by Rob and not me. I noticed that, I think it says, the budget hearing Pearson moved, Rutter seconded. It was actually motioned by Rob. And I don't know if you remember that, but I did check, I did check the video just to make sure. So that's the first.
Was it, excuse me, was it seconded by you?
By Brett Rutter. Nope.
By Rutter, okay.
Yeah, it was motioned by Rob and seconded by Brett. So that's the first. Then, on the second vote, you might recall when I came back into the room, I had mentioned that I did not abstain from that vote. I was not in attendance.
Right.
So it's very important for the minutes to reflect that I was not in attendance for the vote. So it was a four zero vote.
Okay. I will fix that.
Thank you.
I'd like to, oh.
No, any other, or, no?
No, I don't have any other changes.
I was just going to make a motion that we approve the minutes from January 23rd, 2024 with corrections that you suggested.
Seconded?
Seconded by Rob, motioned by Sarah. Seconded by Rob. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor? Four zero vote for the January 23rd minutes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so now I won't say February again. And we'll move on to the next.
You can change yourself.
Yeah, I know. Well, I'm in February, so I guess. Next is our teaching and learning highlights.
All right. Can we have Mr. Michael Azic and our six English language learner teachers come up to the guest table? You'll be introduced to Shelley and Ichbal and Miriam and Kristen and Gillian and Karen as we have them as our teaching and learning highlight. Mr. Michael Azic as the Director of Student Services, he oversees English language learners as well. And as you know, from many of our meetings with our newcomers this year, we have expanded, we've expanded to twice what we've had in the past with six teachers that are here. And the experience and the wealth of knowledge that they bring with them is extraordinary. And we were talking even again today, myself and some principals, about the progress our English language learners have made. Those that have come to Foxborough either through our newcomers at the beginning of the school year or just have moved to Foxborough, because we've had many. And when I think back to when I first came to Foxborough, we had seven English language learner students. Now we're up to close to 150. And that's not even including those that we continue to monitor for four years after they have, if you will, graduated from receiving direct services. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Michael Azic.
Thank you. Just in time for the big increase, I'm here, right? Welcome. Thank you for having us tonight. This is a really good opportunity because I look at Karen when I say this, but since I've been the L Director, as part of my role as Student Services Director, she has always asked for a team, right? A team of professionals that she can work with. And so, over the last couple of years, we're going to go do some introductions where everyone works, the school building, and then I'm going to say a few words, and then we'll go into the presentation because it's really their show tonight, okay? So Ichbal, I mean Gillian, start with you.
Hi, my name's Gillian Billado. I work at the Taylor and the Borough Schools. Combined, we have 31 students there. I just started in the district just shy of November, so I'm brand new here and very excited to be here.
Hi, I'm Kristin Judasey. I am also new to the district, not new to teaching English learners. I also live in Foxborough, so it's amazing to be working in the community that I live in. And I work at the IGO. And we have 42 students and then seven are, seven FELs that we continue to monitor.
Hi, I'm Karen Calabro Carroll. And this is my eighth year in Foxborough as an English learners teacher. I also work at the IGO, and I am very excited to have, be sitting with the team right now.
Okay, hi, I'm Ichbal Kirker. I am happy we have a department. Never dreamed to have this many. But I work at the high school. I have 21 students and one on the way and 10 students I monitor. I've been here, this is my 11th year.
Wow. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Miriam Shea. I'm an L teacher at the Ahearn. This is my first year in Foxborough Public Schools and my third year as an L teacher.
Hi, I'm Shelley Faro. I'm an L teacher at the Ahearn. This is my second year as an L teacher, but the Ahearn has been my teaching home for over 20 years. And so this is my second year doing L, and I enjoy it immensely.
Thank you. It's great to have a team in uniform. So if you're watching from home, you're going to see one of our first teams that are in full uniform together at our meeting.
And I just want to say, you know, this is my fourth year as being the L Director here. And what these ladies do each and every day for our kids and for our families, right? It's not just providing language services to our kids. It's providing a really intimate level of support for our families, whether it's teaching adult English classes in town, whether it's jumping in after being hired a month ago, maybe a cannonball, I would say, probably. But in reality, it's a level of support that is being provided by our, by our team here and very talented, very highly specialized team that day in and day out do anything for our kids. And again, I just want to emphasize, it's not just about providing language support to our kids in the classroom or outside of the classroom. It's, it's really that wraparound approach that they provide for all of our families that are in town. And we've had some challenges, obviously, over the last couple of months, and each one of them have stepped up, whether it be providing registration support for students as they, as they come to us, whether it be WIDA screening, language screening that we're doing. All of those, those aspects are regulations that we must follow, but at the same time, they do it with such grace. So I'm going to turn the floor over to them. It's their show. And if you have any questions at the end, I'll be happy to answer.
So our students come from 25 different countries and speak over 25 different languages. It's amazing to see. At the IGO, at the IGO, I teach kindergarten, first and third graders.
And also at the IGO, I also teach kindergarten, because our kindergarten caseload is the largest number at the IGO. And I also teach second and fourth grade.
At the Taylor School, we have 17 students there. And I'm there part-time between the Taylor and the Borough Schools. And you'll see the next slide. Also, our students, and they're very happy to show off and share their experiences. And we spend a lot of time just cherishing how important it is to be different and have a new language and culture to share with everyone.
So these are some pictures of our Ahearn students. The one on the left is our students going to the book fair that we have twice a year and being able to select a book of their choosing. And this is their, these are their book choices. And on the right, our student council had a door decorating contest. And our students came up with this idea, and it's hard to tell in the picture, but they gave that snowman a name, you know, they had context to it. They thought of phrases and wrote, some of them in English, some of them in their native language, phrases that they believe that snowman would say. And kind of wrote a little bio about that snowman with the vocab that they had acquired up until that point. And these are just too cute of pictures to not share of some of our, of some of our students having a visit from the Bearded Dragon. That's not ours, but that is in a neighboring classroom, and we get to visit it sometimes.
And we have a very diverse population at the Ahearn, just like the other schools. We have students from Brazil, Chile, Dominican Republic, Ukraine, Germany. So it's been an amazing experience working with all of them and learning about their
This is the high school. This is only part of our, our students, our students. These are the beginners, mostly newcomers. So they come from Haiti, Brazil, first Haiti, then Brazil, Honduras, Dominican Republic, Venezuela, and Peru, and DR. As you can see, Ukraine too. I'll go to the parents' class. Oh, it's okay. So in order to help our community, we, we're not only teaching the kids to make it, you know, better experience, you, we, we ask if the parents want to learn. And 44 parents registered. And when we actually began the class, the first class, with 37 parents that have not, half of them have not registered before. So they're excited, they want to learn, they come there like half hour early, so enthusiastic. So we learned, to my, oh, I have, I have two students from the high school that are medium level come and assist me, and they get a grade because they conduct the activities, the matching of vocabulary and pictures and making sentences. And so they get credit and they're very excited to them. The parents are learning even like, like little kids, you know, they, we made friends with the purple dinosaur.
Barney.
Barney. Barney teaches the days of the week with the song. Mr. Hartman teaches counting from one to 100. None of the parents could count in English above 12. So we do it every week, every class, so they, they practice. We make songs and they're happy to move and they get up and, you know, move around their bodies. So what else? The aim is not only to teach English. The aim is we're looking at ahead. You want good parenting, of course, for our students, but then these, these people are going into the, into our stores to work, to, you know, to serve, to clean, to whatever they do. It's good that they know English. It's good that they, you know, they learn, they assimilate, they, they learn to be, you know, be part of the, of society and positive parts of society. And along the way with the high school, you correct some misconceptions, because kids come from sometimes countries that say, say bad things or not so positive things. And you say, no, 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 no. You experience and you see, see, everybody's helping, everybody's, they're teaching you. So you bend a little bit and you teach along the way. So that's an English, that's it.
So this is the bottom line. This is what we look at when we create our caseload. Students come in with another language and we screen them. And if they, they qualify, which means they achieve a score of 4.2 or under 4.2, then we take them on as an English learner. And they're tested every year. And when they reach a score of 4.2 and a literacy score of 3.9, they can exit from the program. But we continue to monitor students for four years after they exit from our program because a student is not considered completely English proficient until they reach a 6.0. So they'll continue to stay in the classroom, but the English language teacher will continue to support that classroom teacher and that student as needed for the next four years until they are able to reach that 6.0. Also, once they exit, they are considered something called FELs, which is former English students. And they will be FELs for four years on a monitor plan. And then they'll completely reclassify into a regular classroom.
So if you want to take here, take a look at these numbers, these are the numbers I break down at each school with, including the FELs. This right here is kind of a basis of what we do and what you see. The BICS is the playground language or the, just the language you would hear just talking, the social language. They pick this up really fast. Then the CALPS is really their academic language. And this is where there's a lot of misconceptions. And you may talk to an L student and think, oh, they have it, the, why are they being, why are they here? What are they doing? But really, they, they still need the academic language. They still need that support, the extra support in the classroom, because even if they're talking with their friends in English and they're going right around, the academic language isn't there yet, so they still need the support.
On average, it takes about seven to 10 years to master academic language.
This is an overview of what we do as L teachers. In our ELD, which stands for English Language Development Instruction, we focus on four language domains, which are listening, speaking, reading, and writing. We use direct instruction to teach small groups based on their language proficiencies. We also push in into other classrooms. That means we go into the other classrooms with the classroom teachers to support the academic language and the content that they're learning. We participate in meetings such as IEPs, 504s, and parent-teacher conferences to offer our insights on how students are doing and progressing. We screen students when they arrive to determine whether they qualify for the L program. We plan, schedule, and administer the annual WIDA Access State Language Acquisition Assessments and communicate and explain the results to all the teachers that work with the students. And we also update the families on how they're doing.
So these are just some of the main ways we support our students with their English language development. We have programs. We have the National Geographic Program. It's Our World. It's great. It brings in a lot of movement, a lot, depending upon the student's level, reading, speaking, a lot of listening, very interactive program for them, and it helps them relate to other areas around the world. We also use Lexia English. This is a program we have, it works a lot on their speaking and listening and also on their grammar. I can personally say this, it's great for our students because some of them can put headphones on when they're not comfortable speaking in front of others and really can speak into their microphone and be heard and feel it in a safe place where some of our other students who have been here longer can continually achieve their levels. And they're celebrating how high their, their scoring and they're looking at their development, and it's a great way to, to see the growth. And we also have our Sheltered English Immersion Scaffolding. That's where we go into the class and we're providing additional materials and a way for the students to access the curriculum in a more friendly manner that maybe with visuals or extra supports that will help them along the way.
So these are our youngest learners. They're our kindergartners. So the kindergartners in action. The Our World Series is adapted to meet the needs of, of these kids. We engage with the hands-on activities. We do a lot of songs, a lot of movement to keep them engaged and enjoying learning English. There's a little video right there that I would love for you to see.
I get better every single day.
I get better every single day.
I choose to feel happy.
I choose to feel happy.
This is how we start every class with the kindergartners, and they love the song.
I get better every.
So our program that we use is from National Geographic, which is really just great. That it's such a program that everybody knows and loves and appreciates. It's very rich. English Language Development Program, and it incorporates videos, engaging texts, visuals, and songs. At the elementary level, you'll see in the picture, when they'll have a video, thematic vocabulary presentation, and our kids take puppets or stuffed animals, and they help teach the stuffed animals, the academic vocabulary that they're learning in the videos. They have a lot of fun with that. There's songs incorporated that actually has karaoke that incorporates the grammar and the vocabulary and the theme. The kids get microphones and stand up and dance to karaoke. Their favorite day is karaoke day. And then in addition, they have their own student books with very powerful texts and photographs and National Geographic explorers in there. There's also an online component that helps bring the book alive by engaging with them in games and audio on the interactive whiteboard. So there's been a lot of real positive receiving of this program since we've started it.
These are just some samples that, of assignments that we did at the middle school. It just shows like the visuals that we use. Labeling is a big strategy that we use with language learners. It really helps them connect the images with the new words that they're trying to acquire. And we typically use like the blanks, sentence frames.
Sentence frames. And you can see, we, we have, offer them two choices, so they have a focus. And a lot of visuals and word blanks.
And we typically just have them share at the beginning of the year where they come from. And we just explain to them that even if the language is not there yet, you can still connect with other people and have those bonds with others.
This is the high school. Let me share this. So when the high schoolers arrived, they spent some, a few weeks with me, three, four weeks with me, because they were tested and they were at zero, no English at all. So we worked on some tools that they can use in understanding and kind of fitting in mainstream classes. So, and then when it was time to integrate, they integrated into math classes first and specials, art, music, health, gym. For the math, the math teachers, we, I worked with the math teachers and the principal, and we, we had a, I wrote a profile about every student that they're getting. The profile had a history of the student, academic history and personal history, if there's trauma, if there was life, missing, interrupted learning, you know, whoever walked from country to country to get to here. All that is good information for the, for the student. And what they're working on in my class, whether games or vocabulary and how much they, they know and how to help them. Also, I included some strategies how to help. For math classes also, I included some, I took from MCAS, language, instruction language and question language in math, math concept, and translated it into our students' languages because even though they, most of them, they come from Haiti, they had to go to Chile to come here, to Brazil, Suriname, and all other. So they picked up those languages and the kids are more proficient in these languages than in, in Haitian Creole. So the teacher can put this in, in the classroom, the student has that, and they can refer to it. So, so far, we had some success. Most of the students are very low, tested very low in math, so we enrolled them into online class, virtual online class. But there are a couple of students that beat the odds, and one of them, in the next slide. One of them scored in Algebra II, the second highest grade in the, in the class. She was, she was crying and dancing, and she was so happy. Another student, the second one, we didn't see over there, says, Ms., can you help me? I want to do the same. Keep me in class, I don't want to go online. I said, all right, we'll do it. She wants, why not? And of course, the teacher will help her and I will do my best. So even though they don't know enough English, they created a PowerPoint presentation. They chose a country of their, you know, country they like. They couldn't choose all their country, but only one person. And so they got to, they got to know about the country, they got to stand up and present and be confident and, you know, get encouraged and, you know, they feel good. Those kids, when they came to Foxborough, they didn't know each other. Even though they lived in the same hotel, they didn't know each other, like, what's your name? I forgot her name. But slowly, they formed a little, you know, community, they got to know each other, they became friends, and they're happy, they're, they're positive and want to learn. Oh, this is the girl. This one leaves you so happy. And that's the one that wanted to do the same, so I said, fine, I'm looking at this. That's at the hotel. As you can see, they're matching cards, vocabulary with pictures. I wrote a few, an introductory, they can ask, they're able to ask, how are you? What's your name? Where do you come from? And how many children you have? They read it, but they are able to understand and, and exchange that. One of the videos we couldn't include it was first my student that helped me paired with, with a parent, and then two parents got encouraged, said, I will do it. So I videotaped them, but they did a good job. So hopefully, they will learn more and more as we go. Those are the two parents. She's pregnant.
As I was saying, they don't know our families really well.
They can. As I had mentioned before, our students use Lexia English. And I had mentioned, it helps them with their speaking and their listening. And it also involves grammar, and they don't even know they're doing it, which is the best part. They look like they're having a lot of fun. So we're building their knowledge on how to use this program that they can then take into their classroom. So when the students are all working individually, they can use this program and already have a head start on it and continue developing their English language development if we're not there.
We have a little video on the, all the way to the right.
Yes, thank you.
What shape is this?
They have characters they work with. It makes, it's very involved, they can identify with characters, they sing and celebrate them, and it's just very fun to watch the pride that they feel.
What shape is this?
So this is a little bit more on the SEI scaffolding. SEI is Sheltered English Immersion, and we have teachers in the building who are Sheltered English Immersion teachers. We support them by modeling and scaffolding the lessons. In the elementary level, we go in a lot of times during the writing blocks when they're doing Empowering Writers. And even a Level 1 student who just arrived from Russia a couple of months ago can actually participate in this with visuals and a lot of extra vocabulary that we support him with. And there's a Level 1 student right in the mix in that picture on the left, and you wouldn't even be able to pick him out, because we are able to kind of... even be able to pick him out because we are able to kind of provide those scaffolds so they can do just what the rest of the class is doing.
So every January, our students take a text test called ACCESS. It is a lot. They have four different domains. They have a listening domain, a reading domain, a writing, and a speaking. The, the testing window is open by DESI in January and you have until the middle of February to complete it. The information is then used to inform the instruction and determine the eligibility to become a former English learner or continue to be serviced by the English Language Development via a Massachusetts certified ESL teacher. We are finishing this up. The elementary just finished up yesterday and today. The stuff is getting picked up and going. I can't speak on the middle school and high school with it, but it is very, the kids are so excited that they've done it, they're so proud of themselves. It is, it is a very difficult test, so. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, well done. Thank you. Questions from the committee?
I have a question. So the number of English learners you have, that's the total number of students you have or is that, that's the total? So how many of them are not from the hotel?
I would say not from the hotel, we have about 55, about any of them.
No, there's more than that. There's only 48 from the hotel and we have about 150 total.
At the IGO, we have 12 from the hotel and then the other 30 are, and then the seven are, the fells are not from the hotel.
I think that's the misnomer there is we have so many students that you saw on the slides that they had, whether it was the Ukraine or Greece or Russia, so many countries our students are coming from, which is very different. So I mentioned, you know, I've been in Foxborough for 13 years and when I came, we had seven students. And so now we're at about 150. And there are 48 students from the hotel, but the rest of the students have moved to Foxborough or they, and they've come from other countries. So it's something that I think is really surprising for people to hear, but the rich diversity that they bring to our classrooms and the stories that they have, it's just amazing, the friendships that they really make with students in their own classroom and then across the schools, because they'll gravitate towards each other too, particularly if their language is the same. So it's really exciting to see, but to see their language explode. I mean, it's, you know, what they're doing every day, supporting the students and then supporting the teachers at the same time, but just to see the language, it happens so quickly. No, lucky, Foxborough is lucky to have this type of diversity. I know we are only talking K through 12, but have we seen an increase at the preschool level as well? We've had just a, a small handful at the preschool level. Okay, all right, great, thank you.
I'd anticipate, based on the age of some students that are living in the hotel, potentially.
Yes. Thank you guys for all you do. You do an amazing job.
Thank you.
Yeah, so my first question is, whose favorite day isn't karaoke day? Because when you said that, I mean, that would be my favorite day too, right?
Absolutely.
And then my second question is, how many times a day do you guys get called angels? Because like, you are, you're angels. You are giving these kids and their families engagement and enrichment and agency and choice and the tools that they need to succeed. And I just, I'm in awe of what you do. I think I say that all the time, but it really is true. I'm in awe of what you're doing. And you look at those pictures and the, the happiness certainly comes, and we know there are hard times and these are transitions and they're difficult, but you can see the engagement and the happiness and the pride in all of those pictures, and that's because of the work that you guys are doing. So if you don't get called angels multiple times per day, then we should change, you should add that to your shirts. Angel 1, Angel 2, put them on back, right? Because it's amazing and I'm, and I'll, I'll just stop there because I'll make a fool of myself.
No, but I also appreciate the autonomy you give some of the students, especially at the high school level, to make their own choices on how far they want to go. I think that's great.
Brett, or Sarah, sorry.
Amen to everything.
I was listening to your presentation in the back, so sorry I'm late. I normally blame my daughter, but it was my fault. But, and, and I did miss the first two minutes, so if any of my questions were already said, tell me to get, tell me to get the notes from Sarah, please. Curious, the question about to ask is more far-ranging and it doesn't need an answer now. I'm curious about your thoughts now. And it's a question that we've asked other people who've come to visit us, because as you know, we just finished up the budget. Thank you for all the work, seriously. And so that's locked. So the question I'm asking is more of like a hopeful one, and you've heard maybe people who watch this type of thing. People here ask this question every now and again, and the question's for admin too. Amy's stats are great in terms of the amount of growth in the EL program over just a comparative short period of time. So we've been staffing up, we've been programming up, and the numbers grow, and that's, that's, that's great. So I guess the question is, well, the caveat is first, I hope you trust your admin, because we do. I hope you trust yourselves and your professional judgment, because we do. And given where we are and given the needs that you see and knowing that we've been staffing up, right? What's next? Like, what do you need? And I mean that sincerely. This committee's asked, I know your admin asks, but we're sincere about that, because we want this program to run well. We want you all to feel supported. And I've taught in situations where I didn't have enough EL support, and it's hard as a classroom teacher. And I'll second what Rob said, what you do is all angelic, it's, it's not easy. So if anybody has any comments, great. Admin too, not trying to put you on the hot seat. Just mostly, we're done with the budget. So like, what, what are you hoping for in the future? What would be great? Level of, whether that's staff training, whether that's further supports and things like that. And I want you to be, I want the district, I want everyone in it to be hopeful about that stuff. So it's a really open-ended question, but if anybody has anything to say, no pressure, just curious. Please.
I think, so I've been here for eight years, this is my eighth year here, so it's changed a lot. Ichbal and I were the only two for a really long time.
Nine years.
Yeah. And there was a slide that we put up where we, we broke it down between what do we do? We do ELD, English Language Development, SEI, support in the classroom, and assessment. And that's a lot. When we have enough staffing, we can do all of those things and we can do them really, really well. When we don't, we can't do all of them. We can't juggle it all, because there's, for a long time, we just felt like there's only us, we can't, we can't, we could only do triage. So I'm looking at the IGO right now, because that's where I am and that's where I've been, and I have Kristen there with me, and, and I think Angel, I think Kristen. I'm able to go into the classroom and support those teachers, and I'm also able to do the English Language Development, and I've never been able to do that to the extent that I've done it this year.
Great.
Yeah. And it makes so much difference, and I believe that the classroom teachers will say the same thing, and I believe the students will say the same thing. And sometimes I walk out of a class, I get an email from a teacher, "Thank you so much for today." And that means a lot to me and I'm happy it means a lot to them too. And I, I have always felt like I am unable to really do my job because I haven't had the time in my schedule to be able to do that. And looking at what we're looking at this year, it's a miracle, it's, it's amazing and it's, and it's, I feel like it could be the beginnings of something really beautiful and really powerful.
Appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to add to that. I think, much like special education, needs can change on a very daily basis legitimately. And so when you budget for special education or you budget for our English learners, that's the number that we budget, but at times during the year, we might get additional kids that come in, we might get additional kids that require different types of placements when it comes to special education, right? But when it comes to our EL students, to Karen's point, at capacity, right now, our capacity can increase easily in September. And so budget's passed, we're there. And what I would like is, is that collaboration that you guys always provide to us, is like, okay, this is where we are, this is what we're looking at, how can we kind of improve and how can we fix where we are, right? And so that, coming from my end, maybe an EL director too, I'm just playing. Joking, joking. But in reality, it's truly.
It's Brent's fault.
That's why I asked.
No, you set up very nicely, I appreciate that.
When people come here and they propose, I mean, if you're going to propose something, like, that's, that's why you, that's why they construct the budget the way they do. They talk to you all first.
It's something that, that Dr. Berto says all the time, is, is to remain agile, right? And so as long as we can remain agile and as needs increase, we can come to you to say, "Hey, our needs increased. This is where we are."
To second what Karen said, I almost, I was going to say the same thing. So I was, the first three years, I was in all five schools, six years after, I was in four schools. I wasn't, until this year, I wasn't able to dedicate enough time for the high schoolers. And I feel that it wasn't fair then, because if you have ELs from, in, in elementary, they have a lot of time to close that gap until the end of high school. When you get in a Level 1 in, in high school, if it's ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th, he doesn't have a lot, a lot of time. And to give them only one period a day, it's unfair. So this year, I feel like almost I was cheating, like, "Oh my God, I can spend the whole day, I can do this and this." And so I'm grateful, but this is necessary, it's, it's perfect and it's on time.
We saw the outcome on the video, that girl, how proud she was. It's amazing.
It's, it's good, yeah, please keep us supported for next year, you know, we like to have this.
Just for perspective on that comment, Ichbal, if you don't mind, Ichbal, for quite some time, was between four different buildings in our district. So she started the high school time, which as you know, started earlier, and ended at the elementary time. So it's remarkable.
Not to mention, I would just like to say one other thing, and, and this was years ago that Ichbal started this, when she saw the need for the parents, and she started at the IGO and having the parent classes in the evening, volunteering to do that, parents coming in so they could learn English, and having games for their children to be off to the side as she was teaching adults, and she's continued. So the passion that we have is from all of them, but the amount of time and effort that goes into it, it really is extraordinary. So thank you all for all that you do.
Any other? I, I always wind up, because I have a thought that's been like coming together, so I don't want to repeat anything you said, because I thought what you said was really profound about there being angels. But what dawned on me, having grown up in this community, is that I had accessed, I, I was able to access the education here in Foxborough as an English-speaking resident, right? And so what I hear loud and clear is what you're doing is creating access for these students. And the takeaway is that's profound in public education. It's incredibly profound in public education that we all can have access where we are, when we are, and wherever we are. And even for a minority of students, it's not the entire student body, it's a, it's a smaller percentage. But how do we budget that, fund that for this group that's necessary and whatever group that is? So that's what I hear loud and clear from you. You have a team that's come together, you're all in the game together, you're creating that team, you know, and leading the way. So we got a Super Bowl coming up, but I got, we got our Super Bowl winners in front of us.
You guys get the trophy.
Yeah, you got the trophy from me. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you for bringing it to this community.
Thank you.
And bringing it to light, what, what it really looks like and, and the why. So thank you very much.
Thank you, for sure.
Thank you. Yeah, really good. Next on the agenda is our superintendent's update.
All right, so I don't know if any of you were able to see on CBS, not CBS, WBZ's Channel 4, CBS Boston actually, the, right after the Grammys, following the Grammys, we had our own, right? For our music department, and you saw Mr. Bush, Bush and Mr. Doldy, as they were, we know, quarter finalists, and semi-finalists for the Grammys for Music Educators, and they did such a wonderful piece where they came in and interviewed one of our students and just really highlighted our program. So if you didn't see that, go back and watch it, it is worth seeing. So that was really exciting. As far as announcements this week, this is our, it's National School Counselor Week, when we think, I don't know if you've been watching on the news, there've been so many different things on mental health and just the stigma that's behind it and the help that's there and the resources. And we know from your support here, whether it's social workers or counselors, adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, the work that they do, and you've heard that and you've supported that from a budgetary standpoint over the number of years. So this is National School Counselors Week, so just really want to do a shout out and thank them for all that they do for our students every day and also for our families. When we talk about wraparound services, there's a lot of wraparound services with our families that they do every single day. Lot going on as we started term three at the secondary level, report cards online. Tomorrow is the 100th day. I know, I'm looking forward, I saw Danielle in the back, or I see Erin McCarthy there too, with our students dressing up as if they were 100 years old. So I'm looking forward to see what they look like tomorrow in school for the 100th day, that's a big day.
I love the pictures, I love the pictures.
Yes, very big day. But I, our principals do a fantastic job with their newsletters too, so all five of them, there's so much information in their newsletters of all the upcoming events. So if you have a child at that level, make sure to look, because it takes a lot of time for the principals to put that together. So take a look at all that's there, because they really are rich with information that's taking place. So as an example, with the BET, our Borough IGO Taylor, one of the things they're doing for the 100th day is a food drive for the Foxborough Food Pantry, and they're collecting food for that up until February vacation. And, and that really is to help restock the shelves for winter. So a wonderful, you know, thing that they're doing, and it's definitely something that's needed. And so that's a new tradition of celebrating the 100th day of school that BET is doing. We have a concert coming up on the 13th with grades 5 to 12, Strings Concert at the high school. After February vacation, we know from talking about it here with Special Olympics, we've got the Unified, as being a Unified Champion School, we're going back, so registration is taking place for Unified Basketball at the Ahearn. So that's exciting when that's going to be brought back. So that's, you know, joining people with intellectual disabilities with all students and being able to have those games and filling the gem there at the Ahearn last year with that. It was just so, I mean, it was electric. It, it really was. So provides some way to make new friendships, to be able to play together, and it's just, it's a great time. So that starts after February break, which is the 19th through the 23rd, in case anybody was knowing, but I know Nathan knows that, right? He has got that far down.
Eight school days.
Also tonight is one of our parent academies that's taking place. So we had a lot of people register from hoping that they attended this evening, so that's taking place right now, and that's parenting in the digital age, which we know that is so challenging at every level. Myself, having four children and watching that, I wish we had had some of the presentations that we are providing through the parent academies. And the only other thing is spring registration's taking place right now for athletics. We still have games, you can go out, basketball, I think we have about five games or so left with boys and girls. We've finished up with wrestling. We've got Hawk Champs for track coming up this week, so gymnastics team doing well, so that's new this year. But again, we've got registration take place for spring, and they said the Groundhog did not see a shadow, so spring's coming early, sports, along with everything else. So any other questions about any of those or any other community events?
Anything with the rec department that, that you know of that?
We have, Mother's End Dodgeball is back, but it closed as quick as it opened, because it filled in I think two or three days. So there, everybody's really excited about that at Gillette, and the Tais and Tiara's Dance is still open, as far as I know. That's always really well-attended for the, the, yeah, for their little girls and their special people, so that's always a fun night. And we, as always, thank you, our National Honor Society and Community Warriors and everybody who continues to volunteer to support those programs.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next is our student rep to the school committee, Nathan.
So just a few quick updates. Senior families, make sure to order your cap and gown, because graduation is sooner than I think. College Panel Night for junior and sophomore families is on Thursday, March 7th at 6:00 PM at the Media Center at the high school, very good event. good event, everyone should attend. And as Joe mentioned, there's eight days until February break. Very exciting.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Dr. Burdo and Mr. Yukna, discussion of the Massachusetts School Billing Authority Statement of Interest, which is in our access as well.
So, as you know, we've already, we've, we've tried this twice already, so this will be our third attempt on the Taylor School. They require you to take the vote every time we come forward with it. So basically, what this resolution request is for you to vote on is for the work that would be done on the Taylor as part of this renovation-expansion program. Obviously, you see in detail, you know, the types of stuff we're going to be fixing and repairing and replacing, the fact that we will redevelop the inside to be more curriculum-appropriate for what we're doing now versus what we did in 1965, similar to what we did with the Borough School. So you need to authorize that you're behind this renovation and, and the process here. We will be, I'll be meeting with the Board of Selectmen next week for them to do the same as we've done in the past. And it's just, these are just two pieces of the puzzle for the Statement of Interest to go forward, back to the MSBA for this, this next round of, of funding.
Thank you. Phil, are there any substantive changes from last year when we submitted this, just the date and the years that are on here?
No, really, the, the, the work will remain the same. You know, we haven't had anything new come up as far as additional issues that way, and we haven't done anything other than, you know, normal maintenance in the last year. So we haven't really changed what the dynamics of what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Yes, Brett?
And then, I know you've spoken of this before, but worth updating the question. Which of the aspects of the renovation do you and your team feel are the most time-sensitive? I mean, I know you addressed heating and other things prior, right? Are there other things that are kind of on the shortlist of more higher priority?
Well, I think the building, you know, again, you have to remember, the building is, is, was built in 1965, so windows, as an example, are single-pane, so rooms tend to have kind of the coolness that you get off of windows, because you don't have that thermal pane and the brake that actually stops the outside air temperature coming in. You know, I think our custodians and our facility staff has done a great job. I think one of the things that we, when the MSBA does come through and look at it, they look at the building and say, it's as clean a building as you can get, you know, from a building that's 1965. It's, things are operating, there aren't lights out, there aren't, you know, problems that way. But that's our responsibility to have a safe environment. But they do also recognize the issues that we've pointed out, and like the cafeteria and the gym, basically having it be wide open to classrooms, which is extremely disruptive to the classroom environment. It was a
Yes.
poor design from that part of, of point of view. And so they see that, they understood what we were talking about when we showed it to them last time. Similarly, we had that at the Borough in a smaller degree, because that's the way the cafeteria was. It was wide open to all the classrooms, but that was not, there was only a handful of classrooms that got interrupted. In this environment, every classroom gets interrupted, because they're either part of the A-Wing or the B-Wing.
Right.
And so they're attached to one of those two areas. So, but everything else, I mean, you know, again, we've keep, we're keeping everything functional, but things like alarm systems and stuff like that, you would like to have more modern, you know, systems that way. You're right, we did do the heating system, because when we, the Borough and the, and the Taylor were the same age, and we knew we could only do one project. So we knew we had to fix the heating system on the other building.
Right.
Because it was never going to make it to when the MSBA would finally fund us. So we did make that decision through MassSave to actually go forward and replace that heating system, and we did it on a level that would, if we did do the expansion like we did at the Borough, it's capable of maintaining and handling that. So we're not going to have to rebuild that plant. But, you know, there's just, it's just a lot of things. It's age. I mean, you're looking, you know, quite honestly, at a fifty, sixty-year-old building, and curriculum has changed tremendously in that timeframe.
Thank you.
So we would need a motion for this proposal that's in your packet?
I motion that we approve submitting the Statement of Interest as presented this evening.
Second. Moved by Rob, seconded by Brett. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five-zero vote. Thank you very much. We'll get this drawn up with today's date of February sixth, and I'll, I'll sign it right away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the work.
Thank you.
For doing all the work on it, again, yes. Next on the agenda is the second reading of the three, three policies that we, we spoke about last week.
I motion that we waive the second reading of Policy JF-E-1, School Admissions.
A second.
Sorry. No, no, that's fine. I read it, that's why I was tired. So to waive the, the reading, the second reading, motion by Rob, seconded by Sarah. Any further discussion about the policy as read last meeting, or anything since then? You do have to vote. I was pausing for anyone, but good. Yes, a motion to vote the policy. Where'd it go? What just happened?
I'd like to make a motion to vote in Policy JF-E-1, School Admissions.
Motion, a second?
A second.
Seconded by Michelle.
Thank you.
You have to vote to approve waiving the minutes.
Right.
First.
Oh, waiving the reading.
Waive the second reading.
Yeah, because that's an official thing.
You made a motion.
I made the motion, we just have to vote on it.
He's seconded it.
My fault, my fault. We should have, I moved into the next, thank you very much.
Good catch.
All in favor of waiving the second reading of the policy? Five-zero, thank you very much. Now, would you?
Now, I'd like to make a motion
There it is.
to adopt Policy J-E-1, the School Admissions, as written. A second?
Seconded by Michelle. Motion by Sarah to approve the policy, seconded by Michelle. All in favor to approve the policy? Five-zero-zero. Thank you.
Second. I motion that we waive the second reading of Policy, Policy, excuse me, JF-E-2, School Admissions.
A second.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Sarah to waive the second reading. All in favor of waiving the second reading of the policy? Five-zero-zero. Thank you. Any further discussion, or questions by anyone? Motion to accept the policy as read?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Policy JF-E-2 for School Admissions as read.
Thank you, Sarah.
A second?
Seconded by Michelle, so motion by Sarah, seconded by Michelle to accept the policy as read. Thank you. All in favor? Five-zero-zero. Thank you.
And finally, I motion that we waive the second reading of Policy JLCD, Administering Medicines to Students.
A second?
Seconded by Michelle, so motion to waive the reading, Rob, seconded by Michelle. All in favor to waive the second reading? Five-zero-zero. Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Policy JLCD with the amendments on the policy administering medicine to students with the new changes and amendments.
Thank you.
A second?
Seconded by Michelle. Motion by Sarah, seconded by Michelle to accept the policy as read. All in favor? Five-zero-zero. Thank you very much. Sorry I missed the first.
Yes. The commentary, for anybody who's watched this far, or is new out here, the policy, you have to go through a couple readings to do policies. And before that, the policy is pitched, let's maybe look at this. Policy Subcommittee Meets, and this year, that's me and Mr. Canfield, we met with administration, thank you, Dr. Burrows, thank you, Dr. Burrows. And then things get vetted through council if they need to be, and then we read it. Once we feel good about that, then we read it here, questions, discussion, and this, so anyway.
Thank you.
This is the end of a long process.
Correct, they're there.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Pearson.
That's, that's good. Next on the agenda is Acceptance of Donations. We have a very generous donation for our baseball program, I think?
Yes, we do. That's awesome.
Are you looking for a motion?
Oh, yeah, someone?
I think we, can we get a little bit?
Is there a specific, is there a specific ask for this particular donation, or is it general for the baseball program?
No, I believe it's being, the family that's made the donation of $5,000 is to support the baseball program, and through its uniforms. So I think the Genetti family that basically, you know, has put forward the $5,000, that's their intent.
That's lovely.
Very generous. I'd like to make a motion to accept with gratitude the donation in the amount of $5,000 to Foxborough Public Schools from the Genetti family.
Second?
Seconded by Rob. Motion by Sarah, seconded by Rob to accept the $5,000 donation. Any further discussion? I'm good. All in favor? It's five-zero-zero.
Awesome.
Well, there we go. Seven-thirty meeting, very timely meeting. Thank you very much for attending on cable, and thank you all for attending here tonight. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
A second?
Seconded by Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero-zero. Meeting adjourned.